Township, alright, and that's like, and in reference to what you said, uh, Mr. Porter, I addressed Steve, uh, I, I would question on that legal part, I think we can sell that forty acres, alright, it's just sitting there and people are putting deer stands up on it and hunting on it, which, you know, if we consider the park and ground that we own as a residence of the township, there's no hunting, you don't have hunting over our park over there where Strunk's property is, you don't have it up in the developments up on Westchester Road, and there's a park up there, so, we gotta enforce the no hunting, I mean, there's stands up there without mentioning the person's name, they've been hunting that forty acres, alright, uh, to get back in reference to the tax, I'm a little confused, the tax is gonna be coming out to the residents in the township, but I can tell you on Goose Town Road, Strunk owned the place down there, they don't even get a trash bill, so my question to the board supervisors, there's three houses on Goose Town Road, since you come out of Modena, both of them are bank, the bank owns them, who pays the taxes on those? Who's paying the trash bill? We also do four houses down in Modena, I call it Creek Road, uh, King Can Alley, when you go down the old bar, you make a right, our township, I don't know if we collect the trash money there, there's four or five homes that are actually in these file fields, and, uh, I don't know what kind of deal was made, but I know a lot of residents in this township that don't even, my, my, my parents' place, been vacant for three years, we still pay tax and trash bill, I just paid mine the other day, and it happened, there was a problem in that too, they came to the township, they get, some kind of bill went to three fifteen, and it was already paid, they got a notice that, you know, they're lingering, so I, I question the person that is doing the billing, alright, and a lot of other residents come here in reference to the billing on the trash thing, and that's our third biggest budget, you know, the police department, and then the road department, and then the trash, there's the three biggest services that we need, and the trash, everybody blaming, if they don't pick up trash, you will have a lot of people coming here, alright, uh, but I just wanna verify the fact that we have places down Modena that a contractor that Modena hired is picking up these file fields trash, alright, and we should be getting built, we should be billing those people, we should be, be building either the bank, or the people, well, there's nobody, uh, nobody on Goose Town, there's three houses side by side, and one's right down Strunk's old property, uh, there's nobody in there, so why, why don't they pay taxes, the realtor, or whoever owns them, and also the trash, why don't they get trash bills? There's twenty-five, I went around the township, there's twenty-five places that aren't getting trash tan and not even being billed. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Come back, please come up and identify yourself.
Name's Fred Cammenden, I live on seventy-five Wilmington Road, listening, and with the young lady over there, everybody say it's on Facebook, it's on the website, what about all the senior citizens in town that may not have it? I got an eighty, eighty-nine-year-old Woodward Two back, lives across the driveway from me, and his lady friend is eighty-seven years old, they don't have that kind of stuff to get this kind of information, like a new tax bill comes out, what are they gonna do, have stick a shot, I mean, open up the bill and see something they knew nothing about? I mean, has, does anybody even think about the seat people in this town that don't have that capability? I mean, I have internet service, and I have a problem with my smartphone, I got a great bandmate living with me as a foster child, I give it to her, but what about the seniors that don't have all these new technologies, don't even wanna be bothered with it, you know, they're left out in the dark of what goes on around here.
The Daily Local News actually reported, the newspaper reported it.
They may have, but what if they don't get the paper? I don't get the Daily Local News, I get the Inquirer, because my life don't like the daily, local Daily News.
No, that's, that's-
And I think that's part of the township, the seniors are being overlooked sometimes, and what's going on in this township? I heard about the tax bill through, I forget who it was, but you know, I'll have probably, but I don't always go on the website myself. I've spent fifty-seven and a half years working, if I got out of high school and I retired, just about two years ago, I really don't wanna be bothered with it, because I dealt with computers, I worked in elevators, which are old now, computer controlled, so, I stay off of the internet as much as I can, but I'm speaking for the seniors that don't get this information, just saying, it's on the website or on Facebook, maybe something should be done, a mailing to find out how many seniors don't have that capability.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote passes four zero. I make a motion to approve December two thousand and fifteen payment authorizations as presented. Questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote passes four zero. Other township business, Pani?
Career Track and Fred Pryor Training Courses, um, back in summary to the budget course, um, for the cost of that one course plus an additional hundred and ninety-nine dollars, have taken a limited training through a one-year period through Fred Pryor and Career Track Training, uh, many of the courses I'm interested in include K-Roll Law, Human Resources for Anyone with Newly Assigned HR Responsibilities, Crash Course for First-Time Manager or Supervisor, Leadership HIPAA, Fourth-verse Comp, How to Rate Clear and Concise Procedures, Team Building, Coaching Skills for Managers and Supervisors, Dealing with Difficult People, and Employment Law, um, would be, yes.
Deal with difficult people.
Deal with difficult people.
I'm fine with that.
It's a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, it, um, we already paid for me to do one course already, so it's for, for full year, any additional trainings, as long as it's under, I think, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, the training would be free to us.
So it's one ninety-nine for the whole year?
Yes.
Is that any, anybody could use it?
No, it has to be made, but, um, if Lisa or Kathy wanted to, or if the board would be, um, meaningful to that, they would have to pay more price for one course, like, I think, mine that I paid for was a hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and then they, yeah, would be an additional hundred and ninety-nine.
Is it online, kind of course?
Um, no, they're in-person courses, there is online training as well, but a lot of times they're held in like Handcrusher or Lancaster or somewhere relatively local to us.
Yeah, I'll talk to them.
Is that something that I should look into for Lisa and Kathy at this time?
Yes.
Sorry, I'd say yes, yeah, if it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, um-
If there's, yeah, pertinent courses and-
Yes, that's what I'm gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely pertinent courses and more than maybe two courses.
Yeah, no, I know-
That it would make sense to have that for you.
Alone, Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel, they have a front desk and administrative training classes, they have writing skill courses, um, that way, again, Lisa does a phenomenal job on the minutes, but to offer her additional courses in which to continue-
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I mean, just make sure, you know, staffing, and, cause I know they probably run all at the same time, but, you gotta watch the staffing issue, that's all, I'm fine with it.
The heating system circuit slash taking down the server, uh, between Christmas and New Year's, the server went down, the battery backup unit had failed, we decided to move all the items from into the battery backup and move it to outlets, uh, with permission from Steve, we ordered a new battery for the battery, um, a few days later, we realized that the heater was registering at seventy-six in the building, but it was freezing cold, somehow a breaker tripped and took out the server and the heater, I'm not sure whether the server is tripping the circuit, or whether the heater is tripping the server, but either way, we need someone to identify what is going on, uh, when we called and spoke with CompNet, the bigger issue is, is that our server is on the fritz, we are still continuing to have issues and situations where we can't access the internet or the server, or it goes down, uh, whenever the server goes down, we basically don't have much that we can work on, we rely on our server and the information on there in order to pull up our projects and things that we're working on, um, it's causing disruption in the workflow.
So the server, I think we have that in the budget.
It is in the budget.
So, and we have a quote on it already, I believe.
We do.
As far as tripping the circuit, I mean, Tag can throw an amper meter on that, he's probably got an amper meter out there to see.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah, you can choose another outlet for that.
But, I, I mean, as far as the server goes, I'm fine with moving forward with, uh, you know, purchasing the new server to get us to a spot where we can have a reliable server for many years to come.
Any objections to that?
How cool is that, it's in the budget, so, whatever, and then, yeah, somebody else will look at the circuits and see.
Okay, so I should proceed with CompNet on moving towards the server?
Yeah, with the quote we had, if you wanna bring me in on a call with them or something, that's fine, just to review it again, well, yeah, Tag or somebody's gonna have to look at the circuits and see what's going on there, so we don't have issues when the new server comes in and gets set up.
Okay, um, the subsidies to the fire company, I received an email stating that Modena and Westwood would like to split the allocation, um, I did let them know that's up to the board to determine the allocations, and I put it on the agenda, um, I did run some numbers on it, uh, per the year-end reports and the reports from the chiefs, uh, the summary of EMS calls, Modena took two hundred and fourteen calls last year, Westwood took a hundred and sixty-three, I believe I just corrected that, because I had a different number, um, the summary of fire calls, Modena took a hundred and two fire calls last year, Westwood took fifty, so, there was a total of five hundred and twenty-nine calls, three hundred and sixteen for Modena and two hundred and thirteen for Westwood, the breakdown of that is, Modena served sixty percent of our calls, and Westwood served forty percent of the calls last year, um, I did wanna follow up with the board on the fuel usage, I did run the numbers for that, um, from May to December, uh, Modena used fourteen, or fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-one gallons, uh, Westwood from April through December used twenty-seven hundred and six gallons, um, so Modena used roughly thirty-five percent of the fuel allocated, and Westwood used about sixty-five percent of the fuel allocations.
Yeah, man, I think the, didn't we leave it up to them as far as the split, I don't know that we ever-
You guys, yeah, is it still, I mean-
I don't think there was anything in place that said we determine the split, I believe they-
It's always by them in the past, so.
Yeah, the, we, we, um, when we, we went to two fire companies instead of three, the distribution was obviously cut three ways before, um, we have always had a really good working relationship with Modena, and, um, we agreed at the time that Modena keep more of the money, um, because it was such a small pot, you know, we were only getting seventy-two-thousand dollars, well, we were getting sixty-two thousand at that time, uh, split two ways, so it was obviously difficult for, more difficult for Modena, um, we come to an agreement that if, if the board would raise it any, anywhere over a hundred thousand, then we would go to fifty-fifty, um, yes, the call, um, balance is a little different, um, there's, there's a couple things that go into that, we have a rescue truck, they don't, we have a tanker, they don't, um, you know, they, they operate with, uh, more fire police, and we get, we went back and forth in the services we provide, we're not trying to, uh, to disrupt anything, but the township's always left it up to us, we wanted to present it to you, um, and, and Modena agreed in the email to do it that way, if it would ever get reduced, then we would certainly wanna go back to a different way of reducing it, um, so that Modena's not in a hardship, but with the current amount that's been funded, then you would agree that fifty-fifty was, was satisfactory, but, so.
That's fine, I mean, I think like the century was, we've always left it up to you guys to determine the split, so.
Yeah, they do most of the calls.
Okay.
Modena does most of the calls, oh, yeah, it's not fifty, yeah.
No, it's not, we just-
Sorry, sorry, um-
Hold on a second. It's all right. It's all right. I'd just like to share, uh, for anybody that's not in the business, and, and I think I've mentioned to the board before, I was a volunteer treasurer at the Longwood Fire Company for six years, so I dealt a deep understanding of how all that works, there, when I resigned, there was about a one-point-three million dollar annual budget, but within the, um, if you're looking at the reports the township provides, there's monies there that comes from foreign insurance companies outside of the state of Pennsylvania, that would be one where the corporate center is outside of the state of Pennsylvania, they funnel that money down through the local municipalities for safety, training, things like that for the fire company, these file field chooses to add that as if it's being given from the township, and I just wanted to make sure for the residents that it's clear, that that money is actually not coming from tax dollars, it's not coming from you, it's coming from outside agencies.
Yeah, the relief, um-
The Relief Association, yes, but you have it listed, if I'm correct, Pani, you have it listed right in your subsidy to the fire company, so-
No, it's not a subsidy.
There's two line items.
There's two line items.
Okay.
Cause they said last the money, they need it.
Right, I just wanted to make that clear to the, like I said, to the residents, so they understand where that funding comes from, so thank you.
That's it, Pani?
Yep, uh, change in township solicitor, I know we addressed some of this before the meeting in the executive session, but, uh, since we did start a conversation via email, I did want to bring it back into the actual meeting, uh, to bring it up, um, a lot of this started out, um, with emails to the board, um, starting on Thursday, um, I just would like to reiterate to the board that changing solicitors has caused a lot of aggravation and change and, and difficulty inside of the office, what usually takes us a short amount of time to make a phone call and find out an answer is being delayed because we do not have a solicitor who is familiar with the history of the township, while I'm not questioning Sienna's ability to provide us legal advice, I'm sure they're extremely good at this, my question and my issue comes into of, I've been here nine months, and the person that I've relied on the most for any sort of history regarding this township has come from our solicitor, and without any knowledge to part of the board, and even to us here in the office, we change solicitors without any type of consultation with us in the administrative office, and this has caused a lot of, of difficulty for us, um, I did wanna say that there's, I'm hoping that we will have some sort of transition in place now, we did discuss that in having some sort of meeting, I hope that we'll be able to smooth a lot of that over, but, it becomes costly to answer these issues because they have to get the file, they have to read over the file, and then they have to be able to give us a cold answer based off of all that history inside there, instead of me being able to just call Vince or JP, ask them a quick question, and get off the phone in a couple minutes, most of the time, that's, that's what has been easiest for us, um, I also got held up with knowing, do I still have permission to contact the solicitor?
Yeah.
Yes, excellent, okay, wanted to check, um, I just didn't, I, I wanted to understand why we really switched from Land Macerlane, I don't understand if it was really for a five-dollar-an-hour savings, or what the entire point of switching is.
I don't have an answer for that, so.
I, I mean, yeah, I, I know, I mean, the reason I brought it back up also is, Pani, I agree with what you're saying, um, it's nothing against, you know, Sienna Bellwar, like, um, but, I, just by the sheer logic, it just appears to me that we're gonna spend more money, just like you said, Pani, you know, researching things that Vince Pompo and the Institute and that, um, for a five-dollar-per-hour savings, and again, I realize that we may not have three votes who wanna go back to Land Macerlane, especially now with, you know, with one less board member, but I would revisit it to see if it is something that, that you guys would wanna consider.
The, the only thing I would note is, I, my email and, um, contact info are gonna be available at, and, and any point that you need to contact me to discuss an issue, feel free to do so, uh, we are gonna have the transitional meeting to discuss any of the open issues, and, um, I, I do think we provide cost-effective and responsive, um, advice to, uh, with this township and any other township that we represent, a good example would be, we've got disability issue, once the, sorry, uh, once, once the board gave its approval, it was a matter of, uh, you know, an hour or so till we were able to achieve the advice and, and get him moving along his way, so I, I don't see this-
That was a, that was a new, that was a new issue, which is easy to go ahead and, um, bring about, what I'm talking about is issues like Manchester Farms, Bridge Press Development, issues with residents, ongoing HR issues, Scott Farm with Chetty Builders, Rousch Chamberlain, the Bio-Hiadeen Fellowship, EMS Resolution, which they are now taking over, and any issues that I have with escrow accounts, there's, this is information and history within the last five, ten, fifteen years that is pertinent and relevant to my day-to-day job.
Sure, the Baba property, how, let's just take it in pieces, how many calls are you getting on the Baba property?
Um, right now.
Right, the Baba property's been an issue that's been a longstanding one in the township, Mahoney, who's with this firm, was our solicitor before Land Macerlane, so they are familiar-
Twenty years before, yes.
Yeah, and so they might be familiar more with the Baba property, given the application, more so than the previous attorney, we also dealt with this in the back, in executive session, and we talked about, um, that, how they are able to help the township, I'm very impressed by their solicitor's report that was given to us that we've never had, um, to that, to that extent, and the other thing is, is that Vince, I'm not trying to discredit the, the previous law firm, but Vince wasn't attending the meetings, uh, and, uh, another solicitor was attending, we had one, that was, one was here for about nine months, and then he left, we also left, lost attorney during, um, negotiations once, and then they replaced with one that really didn't know what the other one had done, and then we were dealing with a solicitor last year that was, was going back to Vince, Sienna was affirmed that this board, and I, I hate rehashing this, but you're funny, Sienna was a, a, a firm that this board was recommended by the current solicitor, I mean, the previous solicitor, that this board chose for, for a specific task that they, that they're able to handle, which is union negotiations and, and things that other law firms are not able to handle, so, I mean, I don't, I don't see anything, I've seen, I've read your emails, and I don't see anything so far where they're not stepping up to the plate one-hundred percent, I mean, the fact that with the executive session, I thought you would have been impressed with how they, they handled, you were invited into that, to, to go through that, um, I don't know how else to answer your question, I mean, it's not about five dollars, it's about things personally in my vote that I saw that were necessarily going wrong previously, and I'm not trying to knock on your firm, I'm just saying that we have this firm, it's been chosen, and, um, you know, that's how we've gone, as, as we stated, we've gone through four treasurers in seven years, I mean, we, you know, townships make changes, you know, and, and that does happen, you know, so, um, we made a change that three board members agreed with, and that's, that's where we're at, I mean, so far, I mean, I, I would be the first, I, I, I'm, I'm watching to make sure that I made a good decision, I mean, I'm pretty impressed so far how they've been handling everything, and anything that you have a concern with, I even asked you what some of the issues were, and you didn't want to reply in an email to me what they were, but Mike is willing to talk to you about any of those issues, if you have a problem, definitely refer back to me, and I'll make sure that they're on top of that, you know, but, um, I mean, I'm just hoping that this is a, a positive, um, situation with this, you know, just going forward, so.
I, I don't think, I mean, I, I think the executive session and some of the things we know was definitely good, and definitely stepped in the right direction, I think where Pani's coming from though is, it's a, it's a change, it's, nobody's questioning Sienna Bellwar, um, but, when you, when you change firms like that, it goes from, you know, her, her potentially getting an answer, making a phone call, getting an answer, goes something like that, to three days down the road, or something like that, it's not, and again, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I know that you wanna save money on illegal fees.
It's not the five dollars, it's, it's so pittiless compared to what the prices I saw three years ago, Joe, it really is, I made the decision in my vote, for what I saw behind the scenes going on with the attorney firms, and how we got mopped up so many different ways, or that they disappeared in different scenarios, I mean, I'm impressed by-
How did we get mopped up?
Um, Brian Linehouse, I mean, yeah, see, Joe, you were here when Brian Linehouse or was-
Certainly.
Yeah, I mean, you saw how he disappeared, and you know when Guy took over, and you know what happened at those meetings, and you know that we, in one point, when we went to, when we ended with that, you know what happened when we went to Click Talk, and how the, the decision came down on one matter, and then now, you're coming out saying, yes, that needs to be challenged, and there's things that have been done behind the scenes that, we're, we're paying the price, and that you're coming around and saying, oh, wow, this is a serious problem, I mean, we, you know, there's nothing wrong with trying, I mean, it's a reputable firm, um, that you agreed to last year to handle a matter that they're able to do, it's an all-in-house-
Well, the only reason, the only reason I agreed to do that is because Land Macerlane doesn't do union negotiations.
And they also recommended that.
Yeah, and I, and I championed for Eric to be our attorney for that, and I championed for that firm, but, I think, I think representing, uh, the township, the board supervisors versus representing us in union negotiations are apples and oranges.
Mike, would you like to say your stats of what you are as far as every year, I mean, that you said in the back room for everybody?
Sure, I've been a, an attorney with a firm for twelve years, that, uh, I do primarily and solely use for representation, both in the capacity of representing townships and boroughs and cities when they're sued, and then about, you know, fifty percent is direct solicitor work, kind of the day-to-day grindout, write-to-know act, second-class township code, MPC, uh, all the other land development matters, and we've got a big cadre of attorneys who deal with the employment and labor law issues, can specialize in that, we can, um, save money and kind of be efficient by in-house getting this stuff right then.
Your words?
I'm kind of super lawyer, rising star from twenty-twelve to present, uh, in government in support of representation, I serve on my own township's planning commission, so, just like Mr. Crook, um, does with RPC here, uh, I, I feel those issues and, uh, write ordinances, review ordinances, apply ordinances.
Okay, so the issue of the history is not a concern to the board?
It, it is to me, certainly, uh, and, you know, that, that's, again, I, I'm not discounting Mike's ability to, to represent us, but, I just, I don't see how switching firms and five dollars an hour is gonna save us money, like, you had said, what, what was our total last year, Pani?
We spent, out of the forty-five-thousand-dollar budget that we had, uh, we managed to keep Land Macerlane's budget to thirty-four-thousand dollars, and Sienna Bellwar union contract negotiations were thirteen thousand five hundred.
So about forty-seven-thousand dollars?
Yep.
I bet we'd see that by ten-thousand dollars a year.
I think we all know where we stand on it, so, I mean, moving forward, you have the ability to work with, uh, Mike and, and Sienna, and hopefully, things can transition well, so I hope that you're right.
And Mike, if you have any problems, make sure you know the, the board is aware of it.
Yeah, and we, we look forward to the transition, we're looking out for the best interest of the township as well, we don't, you know, obviously, we don't wanna, um, put the township through any kind of, with our fees or any other fees or any transition issues.
Okay, Verizon, there's an update for government plans, I spoke with someone in their government division, there's Commonwealth TA pricing, who tried to explain it to me, I don't know what the heck he's talking about.
Yeah, you sent that to me, I haven't had a chance to call it yet.
Talking about global contract pricing, I'm gonna have to request that the board please look into this for us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll review it and pass it on, and, you have any questions?
I have the legal update for Manchester Farms, I spoke with Eric Schrock today, they're paid, we are paid the township through four twenty-seven two thousand and fifteen, there's an outstanding balance of seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for Dell Penna Engineering and Land Macerlane legal fees, they're working, working on processing another draw for the township, they also recently got a letter from the DAP about two weeks ago to do the basin conversion and close the basin, uh, Dan Daley at E.D. Walsh just got the actual approval to close and convert that basin, uh, weather pending, they will start that as soon as they can, um, they also have the fourteen street trees are ready to go, and again, weather permitting, they will be putting those in, uh, the contractor lines and hole, uh, they are trying to work on resolving an extra tonnage issue per Paul Look, the inspector, they paid for them for the contract, but there was extra tonnage that was laid and not part of the contract, so they're disputing that, um, I guess, the tail end, the more money that we get to line hold, the less that will come back to the township at the end, uh, when the basin entries are done, they will be complete, and they should be able to then apply for dedication of the road with the proper paperwork, that's all that.
Am I having any good ideas? Yeah, I do, um, we have an open spot for the zoning hearing board stuff, if anyone would like to apply for that, and you did hear, um, of a resignation tonight of our supervisor, this board has, according to my, like, thirty days to in-house select someone that would like to be on the board supervisor, so, I can only speak for myself, but it would be nice if, um, residents were alerted on the township webpage to apply if they're interested in being a supervisor, to fill out, um, the term that is allowed with Mr. Kilgore's position, and if anyone here in the residents in the audience would like to apply, or if you know someone to make an application for the position is open, and hopefully, this board here within thirty days can choose someone to, to fill out the position.
And can I ask a question to, to Mike on that, um, you know, with the four of us able to appoint the next board member, is that, obviously that falls under, uh, the executive session material, because the township-
That, that, Joe, that's a great question, the, um, any interview by the board or over the board has gotta be in public.
Really?
Well, while we can interview and discuss personnel, and even appointments to various commissions, executive session, there's a carve-out for the elected official position, so-
Versus an, versus an employee.
Versus an employee, or even an appointee, uh, if you wanna appoint someone as PC and the board wanted to meet with them, um, you can meet with them in the executive session.
Well, because it's, even though, because it's an elected position, even though we are appointing somebody to that elected position, it's gotta be a public interview.
That's right, if, if it's gonna be a form of-
If it's gonna be a form, so if two of us, if Carol and I interviewed somebody, that'd be okay.
Right.
Or if Ed and Steve, or what, what have you, but as long as there's four of us, as long as there's one, two, three, three of us-
That's right.
That would have to be a public, okay.
So do we wanna try to set it for the next, for the workshop?
For the workshop, potentially?
Do that. Does it, does it have to be advertised as a special meeting then?
It does not, that would be, that would be-
So, but then, but the issue with the thirty days is, we might have to have a special meeting-
Well, you're, you're right-
As our next meeting is-
If within thirty days.
Yes, it's February.
Next week's February.
February twenty-third.
So it's within the thirty days, okay, so we have a-
So we have two public meetings at that time, and we needed to-
Yeah, we do a workshop, and interview people, and then vote, and then vote at the next meeting.
I have a question, Jay Abel, uh, don't you guys have to vote to accept his resignation first before anything else can happen?
Good question.
No, that's not required.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Is that for your new business? Yeah, that was, that was basically for new business. Just let Lisa make sure you put that on the website, so tell people if they're interested in applying for the township position. And, um, maybe put the time period, we'll, we'd say till next, basically two years, maybe a year and a half.
It would be till, to fill the, um, you know, the remaining term, under the code. It's not full term, but under the code.